Good evening and welcome to the May 18, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. Could I ask the clerk to call the roll please?
Certainly.
Here.
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 Mr. Mayor, you have a floor.
Thank you, Betty. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening. First item on the agenda this evening reports to city officers, comments by mayor. I have several things this evening. First item is a resolution of sympathy for employee Robert Wilkins, and I'd like to read this now if I could. Whereas Robert J. Wilkins was a dedicated and faithful public servant to the City of Lake Forest Parks and Recreation Department, Parks Section, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins served as a maintenance worker two from June 3, 1991 to April 19, 2015, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins served the community at Forest Park Beach, on the athletic fields, and as a groomer of ice ponds, all of which were used regularly by the residents of Lake Forest, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins performed these duties with pride and commitment to excellence, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins was a team player as demonstrated by volunteering to be transferred to the forestry section when internal consolidations were taking place, and in his roles as vice president and president of the Lake Forest Employee Association, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins was an active and contributing member of the Employee Benefit Committee, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins shared his love of music and performance by lending his creative talent and voice to the composition and recording of the city's employee theme song, Pride in Performance, and by volunteering to role-play during the assessment centers utilized in the hiring process for higher-level management positions, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins' love of cooking inspired him to lead a Parks Section team in the city employee annual rib cook-off and took top honors in 2013 and second place in 2014, whereas Robert J. Wilkins' pre-cook-off breakfasts were legendary, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins shared himself spreading congeniality and respect for all those whom he encountered, and whereas Robert J. Wilkins did all this with happiness, laughter, and a twinkle of mischief in his eye. Whereas the passing of Robert J. Wilkins on April 19, 2015 has taken away a highly-regarded family member, public servant, and friend. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Forest in session on May 18, 2015 hereby express its deep regret and sincere sympathy to the members of the family of Robert J. Wilkins. Be it further resolved that this resolution be appropriately inscribed and conveyed to the Wilkins family with a copy to be included in the official minutes of the May 18, 2015 meeting of the Lake Forest City Council. May I have a resolution, a motion to approve the resolution, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Next item on the agenda, swearing in a police officer, Philip Galdani. Would Officer Galdani come up, please?
Would you raise your hand and say your name, please? Philip Galdani. You solemnly swear that I will support and defend the constitutions of the United States and solemnly swear that I will support the constitutions of the United States and the State of Illinois. And will diligently enforce the laws. And will diligently enforce the laws. Of the State of Illinois. Of the State of Illinois. And the City of Lake Forest. And the City of Lake Forest. And that I will faithfully execute. And that I will faithfully execute. The duties of a police officer. The duties of a police officer. To the best of my knowledge and ability. To the best of my knowledge and ability. Congratulations. Thanks. Applause.
Congratulations. Welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
As the chief knows, that's one of my favorite things to do in this role. Next item on the agenda, Lake Forest Day proclamation. The McKinnock American Legion Post 264 salutes Gorton Community Center. That will be the theme this year, and I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the McKinnock Post 264 of the American Legion has undertaken to provide appropriate exercises and entertainment in celebration of Lake Forest Day on Wednesday, August 5, 2015, with a view of bringing together the people of our city in the furtherance of city interest and advancement of community fellowship. And whereas the McKinnock Post 264 of the American Legion honors Lake Forest residents, employees, neighbors, and friends by adopting the theme "Lake Forest: American Legion Salutes Gorton Community Center." Therefore be it hereby proclaimed that said Lake Forest Day celebration is declared to be a city fair and in pursuance thereof in Tuesday, August 4, 2015 and Wednesday, August 5, 2015 shall be observed as a holiday in the City of Lake Forest, and our people are urged to forsake their ordinary pursuits, gather in West Park in a spirit of camaraderie ship and goodwill in spirit of the ideals of our community. And I'd like to present this if I would.
On behalf of the American Legion McKinnock Post 264, I want to express our appreciation to Mayor Donald Schoenhyder and City Manager Robert Kiley and the community of Lake Forest. Thank you very much.
Obviously, I'm getting my exercise tonight, right? Next item on the agenda, proclamation of Historic Preservation Month, and I'd like to again read a proclamation if I could. Whereas since 1971, the National Trust for Historic Preservation has been celebrating a month-long observance of historic preservation, recognizing grassroots efforts across America to protect and preserve historic structures, places, and landscapes. Whereas the City of Lake Forest was one of the first communities in the Chicago region to take a progressive role in historic preservation initiatives, including in 1975 Ragdell led the way when it became a national landmark. 1976, the area of the 1857 plan of Lake Forest became the Lake Forest National Register Historic District. In 1980, the Vine-Oakwood-Green Bay Road National Register Historic District was designated. 1995, the Green Bay Road National Register Historic District was designated, and in 2013, the West Park National Register Historic District was designated. Since 1976, numerous individual properties have been designated as National Register Historic Properties. Today, well over 1,200 structures and open spaces in Lake Forest are recorded in the city's inventory as being historically significant, and at least 35 acres in individual properties have received the city's landmark designation. Whereas in the mid-1990s, the City of Lake Forest officially recognized that its ability to safeguard its distinctive historic character and resources was being tested by development and compatibility with the existing character of historic districts and homes, and therefore determined that public awareness of the importance of historic preservation was to be a high priority. Whereas in 1998, the City of Lake Forest, in response to this challenge, adopted a comprehensive plan that included strengthening its historic preservation efforts. The City Council created an Historic Preservation Commission, independent of the Building Review Board, attached a rider to all real estate transactions, informing buyers of the importance of its ordinances and comprehensive plan, and in maintaining compatibility with community character, historic structures, and streetscapes, and undertook revision of its zoning and demolition process, including amending zoning chapter 51 Historic Preservation. Now there be it resolved that I, Donald Schoenhyder, Mayor of Lake Forest, do proclaim May 2015 to be National Historic Preservation Month and call on all residents to honor the importance of historic preservation throughout our community. We look forward to continuing coordination with the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation as it works with our city officials and residents to protect and preserve the historic visual character of this remarkable city. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. And that concludes my report this evening. Next item on the agenda, comments by City Manager Bob Kiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm glad that Mr. Miller didn't go very far because he is here this evening representing our community spotlight on the Preservation Foundation, and if you've driven around town the last couple of weeks, you've noticed that there are, it seems like thousands of signs out designating various properties that have been award winners in the past, and I think it's a badge of honor, quite frankly, that the more properties that we see every year that have those signs out in front, I think it's an indication that this community takes historic preservation very seriously, and the people and the residents have really gotten behind it. And this evening, we have more awards that are being presented, so Art, with that introduction, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And the awards program of the foundation has been in operation since, I think, 1991, so therefore every year we go around and review nominations in April and then make a presentation to at our annual meeting, and so what I'm going to do is give you a little rundown of what, of kind of how we decide these and how they're selected and for what categories, and then give you some examples that really are a little microcosm of what's really great about our community and the things that we have here and the stewardship that goes on. So that's the kind of little, the plaque that we put up on, gives people to put up on places in town that win awards. And the categories, we follow the Department of Interior, basic categories for kinds of things that are done in preservation. Preservation means just keeping it in well-maintained and taking care of it, and anybody who owns a home in Lake Forest knows that that's easier said than done, especially after winter. We all look at our houses and see things to be done, but people who have maintained their properties in an exemplary fashion get that kind of an award. Second one is reconstruction. The third is restoration, and then rehabilitation. And a lot of us are involved also in rehabilitation of our places. And finally, infill, which is new places that fit harmoniously compatibly, compatible, are compatible with their neighborhoods. So here are six things, places that we gave awards to, and you can see that they're, and they're around the town in different places. There's, at the upper top, there's one in the King Muir neighborhood, then there's one in the old-time neighborhood south of Lake Forest College, then there's one in the old South Woods off of Ringwood, then there's new city signs that you can see there that have been gone up around the city. And then the last two include a tea house, an Asian tea house that was adaptively reused as a house in 1958 and is being beautifully maintained, and finally, a house that was whittled down in the bad days of the 1930s. They lopped off the left-hand wing that you see there, and it was put back on recently with the, with the plans that exist for that house that are still there. They rebuilt it that way. So let me show you. Okay, rehabilitation, that says there's a need to alter or add to some historic property to meet continuing and changing needs, uses for people. How do modern families live, not necessarily the way they did 100 years ago, and then so repairing and making alterations and additions makes this possible. So here's a good example. This is a house built in the King Muir neighborhood 15 minutes before the crash in 1929. Fortunately, it was, it was one of the places that was built there. The architect was Howard Irvin. Well, 1928, I guess that's more than 15 minutes, but still, very shortly before the crash. This is a rehabilitation in that the wing that you see on the left is added to it, and the current owners, the Reman-Snyder's, have been maintaining their house well, and here's their new addition. You can see where it's located in the King Muir neighborhood on the upper left. Then on the right is the house again. The plan shows the coverage of the addition, which is a kitchen and living space, adjacent living space. The architect is Michael Brazeeman, who's done several projects in Lake Forest, and you can orient yourself by, and when you drive along Deer Path, by the gates that are shown on the left. Here's what it looks like, first level enlarged and remodeled. You can see on the right there that what the other side of the house looks like and how it's repeated on this side of the house, the north side where the wing is, and correctly covering this same design, the shutters and all. Just a little detail that shows in how carefully the woodwork is done to look like the handmade woodwork of the French Norman Revival style. Another category, 128 Wildwood Road. This is an interesting one. The little porch in the front used to be enclosed, and it's been restored in a charming way for the current owners who inherited it from an aunt who was a daughter of the person who built it, Alex Kelly. It's a Georgian revival house, but very simple by Lake Forest standards generally. And an interesting finding about that porch is that it has some categories that seem to be unusual and may relate to Alex Kelly's origins in Scotland, but you can see the details are very classical, and also it's very plain-looking brickwork. It almost looks solid. Now, a bunch of these houses, the DNA of the neighborhood in effect, were from Kelly's, really Scottish Georgian, at least Guy Berg, who worked on this project, is really suggesting. And you can see at lower left, a Scottish building, very simple, but plain and flat, and there are several houses in the neighborhood that have this kind of style. So watch for them when you're in that area. You can see them. Again, that brickwork, which is very much like in Scotland, and the little, the porticoes like there also. Preservation, that's on maintenance and repair, and this is a really interesting little place. This is a 1916 Asian tea house built for Mrs. Nettie Fowler McCormick, who was elderly in her garden. She built a house that year also and got back and forth in a little kind of motorized golf cart with a wicker, that was a wicker basket on top, and Corky Hamel, who died a couple of years ago, remembered seeing her before she died in 1922, tooling around on her little golf cart on those things. But she would go to her house, from her house to this place and entertain people, like the young prep-school-aged Henry Luce, the founder of Time Life, who spent a summer with her there studying here. This is a picture of it as it looked then, and here's a picture of it looked in the '60s after it had been adaptively reused and with the Asian timber framing. Now this is fascinating in that there's a book coming out this fall about I.W. Coburn, published by Jay Pridmore here in town, and this is an example of I.W. Coburn's new formalist work that he did in town, but you can see he added, he made it, turned it into a living space with two wings. There's an entry court and 1958 additions, and this, I think the landscape is probably by either Franz Lip, who worked with I.W. Coburn, or Marshall Johnson, who worked with him also, but giving a little bit of Japanese style to that whole complex there. And it's a wonderful house tucked in off of Illinois Road. It's just a gem. So having this be preserved now by new owners is phenomenal, and we're very happy that that was given an award. This shows some of the details. This is the very careful details that can be noted on this existing, now going to be, it's 99-year-old tea house, and the woodwork is chinoiserie, very much interesting to people in the 18th century and repeatedly after that. Look at the metalwork here. This is just fantastic metalwork on the house, on the, on the tea house. Here it looks like from the inside, and compared with a Japanese tea house room that you can see there too, from Mrs. Thorne's Art Institute showrooms that she has, little miniature rooms. So preservation and rehabilitation. Let's see, here's this house, which you'll notice, we'll find, you'll see later in a map, is very close to the other one, picked up on the chinoiserie with this little porch that you can see, the entry porch there, which is a different play on the Georgian theme. The Georgians were interested in Chinese and Asian influence, and this, this house of Thomas and Catherine Donovan certainly reflects this high interest of that period. David Adler was the architect, 1934. It was a wonderful time to build a house if you had lots of cash because people were looking for any kind of work, so you could get the best craftsmen and the best materials for the bargains that haven't been equal since then. These are some pictures that show you kind of the layout of the house. It's a little bit surprising, but you can see it's fairly substantial and it's, it has a separated garage auxiliary building with a dog trot in it. Here you can see what the courtyard looks like, which is on the left there, and there's a swimming pool in the, in the other side of the house, and a tennis court on the, on the right. Now this, this is what's fun about it. It has a little Ardeco twist to it in that Adler's playing with you. He doesn't want you to know how big the house is when you come up to it. It's shrouded in, in the summertime, it's shrouded in all kinds of foliage, so you can't see it, and so it looks like it's just like that Scottish house we saw earlier, kind of a modest, for Lake Forest, Georgian house, but it's big behind it. Once you go inside and you turn to the right and you go into the, into under the rooms, a little living room, what you'd think would be the living room, and you look down a hallway that looks like a bowling alley, you know how big the house is. So this is this beautifully worked-out place with wonderful Chinese-influenced features. This is a rose garden that's been there since 1934, and it's been in stewardship of several families who've kept it in this very good condition, working with architects like the Melikars and like the Polton Group, who recently added a garage that we're going to see in a minute. So here you can see that wonderful portico in its detail. So what they needed to do was to add a garage close to the house. This is the way we live now. So we do adapt to things. We change and make these houses livable to keep them interesting to people, and so the Polton Group built this garage in 2014, and we'll look at the detail of how well they did. This is how it relates to the building itself, the service wing of the building picks up the same kind of elements. And look at these details, and see, in the upper left, you can see how the brick lintel kind of above it is, is on angles to look like stonework. Everything, the detail of the, underneath the gutters on the other side, you can see the, the frieze has this wonderful detail, so it's really superlative. Okay, now here's one that we did, is a Heritage Award, which is the Broadsmore House in West Lake Forest. This is the one there where they had removed the wing in the '30s to keep the property taxes down and the, and everything, and to be able to manage the cost of the place, and it's been in good stewardship of good Lake Forest families for, for decades and decades, but recently was bought, and that wing was restored on the left. The work was done by John Eifler, a Chicago architect, who does a lot of work with Frank Lloyd Wright, but knows old architecture. This is Otis and Clark, and the drawings that are still surviving are by Otis and Clark from 1909, and the house was for James and Narcissa Thorn. This is kind of west, southwest of the Oencita Club, and before 41 went in, it was sort of a short horse trot away. This shows you pictures of what it looked like originally. There's Mrs. Thorn with her miniature, one of her miniature rooms, a couple of, shows some of her miniature rooms and her, in front of her house with her automobile. This shows, the top left shows the entry, a close-up of the entry, and below is this around 1700 similar entry from Paris in the late Louis XIV period. So this is a period of great deal of accuracy of design for historic structures, and ironwork is fabulous. As you can see over there on the right, the owners are Mr. and Mrs. Alexos. Infill, so new construction that demonstrates exemplary contextual compatibility in an established neighborhood, and we have a very special thing to show you here, the entry signs for the City of Lake Forest. These were, have been done and been put up on the roadways that, where it's been possible so far, that, that have a great deal of historic resonance with, with the community here. The high school, the Oencita Club have signs like that. The architects are Melikar Architects, done in 2014, and this shows kind of the, the origins of the sign. You can see the original sign before, lower left, the round sign, but picking up on a Stanley Anderson office lettering study for Lake Forest High School sign that's on the right, and putting this into this context, the new city sign, and very carefully sturdily arranged so that it will stay there for a good while. Interestingly, it shows the crest of the city there, the logo, and it reflects the forest and the prairie and the lake, which is pretty much what we're about. We hope we're going to be more forest and less prairie, at least where we have had ash trees recently, but we'll see. Now, so just to recap, before I do one thing, I want to give the award to the city for that, but I want to point out, just remind you about rehabilitation of two structures, Preservation Award for 1005 East Illinois Road, and then Preservation and Rehabilitation for 20 South Mayflower Road, then the Heritage Award for 525 Broadsmore, and then the Infill Award, City of Lake Forest entry signage, which is really fantastic. Thank you very much, but I'm going to now present, if I can, since, if the, if the person who takes the photographs hasn't gone to lunch. We have, we're going to give you the award if the mayor would come forward again.
But on behalf of the foundation, we would like to give you the award for this really excellent site. This plaque's a little heavy, and it's probably too, too big to go hang on the poles.
One sec.
Yeah, but, so.
Now we just got to come up with a project for next year so we can be award winner two years in a row. That completes my report for this evening.
Great, thanks, Bob. And I want to recognize Preservation Foundation as well. What you do for And I want to recognize Preservation Foundation as well, what you do for our community very often with little if any recognition, except when we see the signs in May. You have such an impact on the ongoing character and the quality of life here in Lake Forest. So thank you very much for what you do. And I also want to recognize Kathy Zerniak, who had a big hand in those signs and spent a lot of time doing a lot of research and a lot of analysis and a lot of comparisons. And I think they could not have come out better. So Kathy, thank you for all your work. Next item on the agenda, comments by council members. We had a recent community engagement meeting, and I'd like Alderman Reisenberg, if he could make a brief report on that.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 12th, I chaired a community engagement meeting where we reviewed the city's community development process. I was joined by Charlie King, BRB chairman, Bob Franksen, ZBA chairman, Lloyd Culbertson from the Plan Commission, and Jim Pruschlack, incoming HPC chairman. Invitations were sent to 50 architects, builders, developers, and landscape architects, all of which have been involved in at least three projects in Lake Forest in the last 18 months. Also invitations were extended to managers of each local real estate office along with the historic, along with the Preservation Foundation. Approximately 15 to 20 individuals were in attendance and discussion centered around four questions. First, how has the community development process worked for you? Second, are the processes used in other communities, are there processes used in other communities that Lake Forest should consider and/or adopt? What ideas do you have for change and what should not be changed? Overall, we heard that board and commission's process works quite well, particularly when strong, well-developed projects are presented. Also, there seemed to be unanimity that the process, design standards, and requirements were necessary in helping to maintain the character and quality of Lake Forest. There was some concern that with reduced staff, particularly in busy seasons, there can be longer review times, less assistance with project design, and less time available for hands-on staff support. Finally, there was a desire for continued updating of the construction codes, which we all know is in process. As a follow-up to the forum, several action steps are being taken. Specifically, staff will share this summary with the boards and commissions, provide monthly updates to city council on the turnaround time for building permits, research, peer review processes used in other communities, in an effort to provide support for architects and designers at the front end of the process. Invite assistance from the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation to help provide information and raise awareness in the community of the role of good design in streamlining the review process. And lastly, direct the boards and commissions to continually explore ways to streamline and clarify the process. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Alderman Reisenberg? Alderman Hamlet?
You noted that in number 10. What were the comments on our demolition procedure?
Oh, boy. I don't, Bob, Kathy, I don't recommend anything. I don't recommend any comments. You know, we worked off the, we worked off the four questions, you know, trying to kind of focus, focus the meeting rather than, you know, just some sort of hodgepodge. And I don't recall, Kathy or Bob, do you?
No, I might ask Kathy to come up and talk about it.
Yeah. The comment I recall about demolitions was that currently in, outside of the historic districts, there is a requirement that prior to approval of demolition, alternatives to demolition need to be explored. And I think the comment was, in some cases, a structural report or a condition, a general condition report on the house may actually demonstrate that alternatives aren't preferred or wouldn't result in a better end product. So there may be, I think, some language adjustment there that we have to acknowledge that some houses really have lived their useful lives. Certainly, the homes that you saw presented with awards a few moments ago, those don't fall into that category, but we certainly all know homes in Lake Forest that weren't built for 100 years. So I think some softening or some re-looking at whether a full study of alternatives is appropriate. That was my recollection.
I asked the question only because that's the most frequent complaint that I hear from real estate people out there, is how, generally speaking, they feel our demolition ordinance is pretty harsh. And I think I've mentioned this before, probably with the current council, it wouldn't be a bad idea if one night maybe you take 10 or 15 minutes and go through the demolition ordinance so that everybody up here understands how it really works. And then we could kick around whether we think it needs tweaking or not. Just a thought, and it doesn't have to happen tomorrow, if it happened in the next six to 12 months, I think.
Mike, I think it's a good idea. What maybe the first step would be is maybe Kathy could do a quick summary for us that we could review and then come back with some specific questions of her as well. So if we did something like that, then it'd be a chance to be a little bit more impactful and see if we could, if there were things that we really needed to accomplish or make some changes on, we could really dig in.
However, it's most efficient to do.
That's great.
Do that.
Thanks. Yeah. I guess I would just kind of like, well, I did summarize, but a summary of the summaries. Actually, I didn't quite know what to expect. I didn't know whether we were, whether I, we were going to get pummeled or whatever. But I have to say, I was pleasantly surprised. I mean, on a scale of one to 10, you know, we were, I don't know that we were a nine, but we were pretty doggone close. And I was very pleased that, you know, I somewhat expected, you know, when you look at government, you expect some whining regarding bureaucracy or regulation or whatever. And they genuinely embraced those. And there were some people that did a lot of work outside of our community also that said, you know, don't ever change those. I was like, whoa. They said, you know, that's what makes Lake Forest, Lake Forest. So I came away generally, generally, generally pleased.
You had a good turnout?
You know, I don't, it's 15 to 20, yeah, I guess. I didn't know what to expect, you know, 20 out of, we invited, we invited 50, so what's that, 40%? So I guess that's not bad for the middle of the, middle of the week and whatever. Yeah.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Any other comments by council?
I have a quick comment. On behalf of Alderman, Byler, and myself, I would like to remind everyone that this Wednesday, May 20th, is our first ward meeting at 7:00 PM at Gordon Community Center. We're very much looking forward to the exchange of information and ideas with our Ward One residents. So hope to see people there.
Thanks, Alderman. I did have one additional comment, you know, under the category of who would have thought five years ago. Over the last few months, I have received numerous inquiries and emails and calls from residents about the use of drones in our community. Received a couple over the weekend about a drone being over the beach. And so I have asked staff and our city attorney, Phil Pini, to look at regulations, rules, and requirements of both North Shore communities as well, as other communities in the area and the state, with an eye toward perhaps drafting some, hate to call it regulation, but rules perhaps, and exploring some restrictions perhaps on that in the hopes of having something that doesn't impact the freedom of people to do what they care to do, but certainly impacts the freedom of our residents to enjoy our community. So staff is going to look at that. I've asked them to do that and hopefully have something in the next 30 days or so.
I think the FAA is starting to think seriously about legislation regulating that.
They have, Mike. I know they've, and we've talked about, they've also, they have much deeper regulation than they've had. I think it's still a work in progress as well.
Yeah.
But I'd like to see what other communities are doing as well. So. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on to the next item, opportunity for citizens to address the council on any non-agenda items. Anyone from the community would like to address the council on a non-agenda item this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on. Items for omnibus vote consideration is item number five on the agenda. Tonight, we have 10, and I will read all 10 of these. If any council member wishes to take any of them individually, we will do so, otherwise I will ask for a motion to approve at the end of the omnibus. Item number one, approval of the May 4, 2015 city council meeting minutes, first and second session. Number two, approval of a resolution of appreciation for the Croya 2014-2015 Executive Committee. Number three, approval of the Intergovernmental Mutual Fire Protection Agreement with the Libertyville Fire Department for Reciprocal Services for Fire and Emergency Medical Calls. Number four, request to award a one-year contract to grant consulting firm Administrative Consulting Specialists to help identify, obtain, and maintain city grants. Number five, approval of benefit consulting services to be provided in fiscal year 2016 by Right Benefit Strategies. Number six, consideration of ordinances approving recommendations from the Building Review Board, first reading and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number seven, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading and if desired by the council, final approval. Number eight, approval to purchase a new digital ortho imagery, thank you, for GIS mapping. Number nine, approval of GIS consortium service provider contract. And number 10, award of Lake Forest portion of the 2015 joint concrete sidewalk and curb replacement contract. Any member of the council wish to take any of those items individually?
Alderman? Just a question, not to take it separately, but on seven, 328 Westminster, I'm just curious, how much over bulk is that in square footage about?
I know it's in your packet. I believe total was about 224.
224 square feet out of, over 4/12.
Correct.
Okay. And it said previously approved, so did the ZBA previously approve that or?
The Historic Preservation Commission previously approved an overage. That ordinance came before you with a specific, the building scale ordinances come before you with a specific overage. The plans were modified, so this ordinance just corrects the number. I believe it went up by about 18 square feet, so it was minimal, but we wanted the right number to be in the ordinance, so you did previously approve this particular ordinance.
Great, thanks.
Yes, Vic?
Mr. Mayor, I just would point out that in the second set of minutes, there's a Scrivener's error, the ghost of Alderman Orr happened to creep in there, but we have corrected it.
Thank you for letting us know. Anyone else? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the omnibus.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alvin Redford?
Aye.
Alvin Sizer?
Aye.
Alvin Meeven?
Aye.
Alvin Redford?
Aye.
Alvin Haldeman?
Aye.
Alvin Moreno?
Aye.
78 Jeremy?
Motion started.
Thank you, Biddy, very much. Next item on the agenda, ordinances. We have no ordinances this evening to consider. Item number seven, new business, consideration of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Lake Forest and Lake Forest Open Lands Association relating to an exchange of property within the city, presented by Bob Keighley, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is actually a very exciting moment. I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the community. And before he stands up and contradicts anything I say, I do want to mention that the creativity and ingenuity behind the concept that we're going to talk about here, really, all the credit goes to John Centell, the president of Lake Forest Open Lands. You might recall that back in December, you heard a presentation from Lake County Forest Preserve District and also Lake Forest Open Lands with respect to what was happening at Fort Sheridan and also the Glifford Prop, project that would restore McCormick Nature Preserve as well as some of the bluff area in the southeast quadrant of the city of Lake Forest. And I think the general sentiment certainly of the council that evening was, this is a great project, but where's the money going to come from? And as I expressed to John after that meeting, is that I think the city was really behind the project. The hard part for us is with all the other priorities that we have in town, infrastructure priorities that we have in town, it's going to be hard to justify how we put $600,000 towards this project versus storm sewers or roads or a lot of the other things that we have in town, particularly because even though the city has held this property for a number of years, it's not generally an active park area outside of the day camp that we have, the McCormick camp that's run in the summertime. So I know that that got the wheels in John's brain turning, and he approached me approximately two months ago and said, I've got a crazy idea. What do you think? What if we swap properties? And Lake Forest Open Lands, who really is in the business of managing open space, would swap two parcels that they have for the McCormick Nature Preserve, the first being one very high-profile project, which really is more in our wheelhouse, being a park in the center of town, Lake Forest Open Lands Park at Green Bay and Deer Path. And the second one, which we currently have a license to operate the Elloa Gardens on, is a triangle parcel out at Elloa Farms. So the memorandum of understanding that you have before you this evening basically would set in motion the swap of those parcels and tell staff, direct staff, both at Open Lands and the City of Lake Forest, to begin working with legal counsel, to get the appraisals put together, to get the surveys all put together, and get all the necessary paperwork, because it is going to be a little complicated because of the fact that there are two current projects in the works with respect to McCormick Nature Preserve that the city has been involved with outside agency. One is working with the United States Army in the cleanup of dump that is on more of the western portion of McCormick Nature Preserve adjacent to Fort Sheridan. And then the other is more on the eastern portion of the property, which is the Glifford Restoration Project that we discussed before. So before maybe I open it up for any comments, I'd ask John to come forward, make any comments on behalf of Lake Forest Open Lands. I know he'll try and contradict some of the things I said, but don't believe anything he says, because he really deserves all the credit for putting this, he's the brains behind this concept. So, John?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm John Centell. It's my privilege to serve as president of Lake Forest Open Lands Association, and I'm pleased to be here with our board chair, Mark Ahern, to thank the city council for their consideration of this memorandum of understanding. Bob is very kind to give me some credit upfront, but I also want to acknowledge his vision and partnership and as well as city staff in considering the creative approaches that would allow our community to take advantage of available funding to help us to restore and permanently protect and preserve McCormick Ravine, but also to help us build upon the potential of Open Lands Park and the Elloa Garden as open space assets for our community. The board of Open Lands really believes that those partnerships, believes that this is one of those partnerships opportunities, which is really a win-win, not only for residents but for open space and nature. The public and private partnership between the city and Lake Forest Open Lands has had many, many successes over the years, which have greatly benefited our community. Middle Fork Savannah, Everett Preserve, and Melody Farm, just to name a few. Our board is unanimous in that the action proposed tonight is one of those uniquely opportune endeavors that could result in another milestone result for our community. It's really an investment in our future. We believe that the land swap considered tonight allows Open Lands to focus on what we do best. We're proud of our history of success in preserving some of the highest-quality natural areas in Illinois, and moreover, we're the first land trust in Illinois to achieve national reaccreditation from the Land Trust Alliance in recognition of meeting the highest national quality standards for excellence and permanently protecting important open spaces. Our mission is and will always be the permanent protection and restoration of our natural landscapes and ensuring that all generations in our community have a meaningful connection to nature and our land. With this in mind, the preservation of McCormick has been a strategic priority for Open Lands for a long, long time. We've been pleased to volunteer our resources to research and manage and educate the public about McCormick for nearly 20 years. Our board is passionate about the potential to restore McCormick and is committed to invest the resources to get it done so our community can enjoy McCormick for the future and why we have a real connection to Open Lands Park. We also feel that the city is better able to take advantage of the potential of this gateway parcel for our residents. Several months ago, I was invited to speak with some of the council members about the natural and cultural value of McCormick Ravine, and at the time, we were beginning to examine what Bob described as the potential to take advantage of this federal funding through the Great Lakes Fishery and Ecosystem Restoration Program. And I recall I went over my allotted time then, which is probably not a surprise, but in my defense, it's because it's hard to really capture the cultural, recreational, and conservation value of McCormick in just a handful of slides. and conservation value of McCormick in just a handful of slides. Lake Forest was settled in what could arguably be the most beautiful terrain in the Chicago area, perhaps the entire state, and I was fascinated by historical plat map of the city of Lake Forest from 1857, which was just recently hung in City Hall Conference Room. It is a snapshot that really reveals how our area was defined by ravines. Back in the 1800s, our ravines had continuously flowing water in them and a complex of, of ponds and pools and wildlife. And so what's exciting is over the last couple of years, we've seen our community really begin to embrace that ravines as a remnant of our natural history just waiting for our help. And the true gem of all ravines is the quietly powerful place called McCormick Ravine. Being able to take advantage of a public-private partnership to invest and restore the hydrology and the habitat of McCormick is very, very exciting. So I realize that I'm probably approaching my allotted time, but I, I did want to take time to again review the natural value of McCormick. I'll just summarize it to say that of the approximately 38 lakeshore ravines in Illinois, I believe McCormick Ravine is the crown jewel of them all. Not only is McCormick special in terms of habitat, but it's also rich in cultural history and is highly valuable to our city in terms of its natural infrastructure and the ecosystem services it provides. It's difficult to calculate and quantify the economic benefit that restoration could provide to our city, but I'd suggest that its substantial includes the following: protection of our water quality in Lake Michigan, helping to manage much of the stormwater east of Green Bay Road. It will remain as a natural buffer for our southernmost homeowners in Villa Turkam. It will improve our air quality. It greatly enhances our quality of life in terms of its recreational opportunities. Where else can we experience in a natural way a trail with this dramatic change in topography that empties into Lake Michigan? It educates our children in geology and history like nowhere else can, and it gives our community a historic sense of place. So Lake Forest Open Lands has been privileged to help steward McCormick for nearly two decades. From a conservation perspective, we have always considered it a very top priority. In our 48-year history, we've been pleased to partner with our community leaders to protect our most valuable natural areas, and it appears that our next milestone project is right in front of us, and we're very excited. I also thought I'd just take a second to, for a little plug on a, with a couple of slides of our Open Lands and City Joint Native Tree and Plant Sale we had this past week, and I saw some of you folks there. It was a successful event on a misty morning, not just because we sold a lot of native trees and plants to help re-green our community, but because there was a real energy around the event. We had speakers on native plants and butterflies and volunteers from the garden club and local landscapers, and there's a great vibe, and my sense is that we're really beginning to make progress in getting our message out of replacing trees and re-greening our community. And it's really important to thank Chuck Myers and Peter Gordon and the entire city staff for their incredible efforts to make that such a great event. And finally, there's one other slide. Here's a picture of one happy customer at the event, who was purchasing native plants to put in his yard, and I'm sure they're all planted already, so. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions at all you may have on the memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you, John, very much, and you're one of the few people that we will give a pass if you go a little bit over.
Thank you.
Questions for John or for Bob?
I have a question. I should be familiar with this, but I'm not. Are there any elected members of Lake Forest City Council or other boards or commissions that serve on the Board of Open Lands?
Not currently. We have Pass Alderman, Tim Reynolds and David Moore, but no current Alderman.
The reason I ask is the nexus between Open Lands and the city is, is pretty broad, and Open Lands has an awful lot of influence on everything that goes on here. It just seems to me, especially with a land transfer like this, that it's probably time to consider having an elected person from the city on the Board of Open Lands.
Why not? Yeah, I can't, I mean, we have candidates for, to be governors and directors. Every year, we admit new candidates, and I'm sure we'd be, we'd welcome a candidate from the city council on our Board of Governors. Any other questions?
Would that give rise to any conflicts of interest when we have possible swaps like this coming up?
We have, let me take a stab at that. We do have some relationships with other organizations in town, and the concern about conflicting interests because of fiduciary duties as a director or as a member of the council obviously comes into play. Where we've done this in other circumstances, we have more a participatory right as opposed to a board position. So I think that we can address the, the concern that Alderman Tech raises without creating a corresponding conflict situation. I think it's important that we already, to note that we already have contractual relations with Open Lands that have been the guiding force of how Open Lands cares for some of the city lands and, and some of the other relationship issues with the city and Open Lands. But I, I think your concern about the potential for a conflict in light of the fiduciary responsibilities that a director would have of Open Lands and a, a member of the council would be recognized if we had some kind of relationship, albeit not a full membership one.
Person could always recuse themselves.
Mayor, yeah, I'd, I'd just like to make a comment on this idea. I just think it's incredibly exciting. It seems, it just seems like a perfect fit. I agree completely with John that it's a win-win. It's certainly exciting for the city, and, and I think some of us are already cooking up some ideas of walks along Deer Path from, from the new Forest Park to the, to what was Open Lands Park. I don't know, do we, does that mean we have to rename it? What's the plan on that?
Beidler Park?
No, I wasn't suggesting.
Oh, okay. Wow.
All right. Anyway, more later on that.
I think she was thinking Kylie, but that was.
I hadn't actually, that wasn't, but, but I, it's the creativity here, and I know it was both of you. I think probably the solidity of your relationship has, has, has helped make this kind of conversation happen, but it's just incredibly exciting. And I think those of us who have visited McCormick Ravine, it is, it is truly spectacular, and to know that it's going to be in the hands and stewardship of an organization that really understands the tasks that are necessary to, to, to do the restoration and the stewardship is just thrilling. I couldn't be more excited. I, I, sometimes when we sit up here, there are things that are a little, you know, complicated, and we have to kind of look at all the ins and outs. This one just looks to me like a really good idea, and I'm just delighted to endorse it.
I would like to second that. When I first heard about it, and it was part of my role on PPL, I mean, it just seemed like a absolutely slam, it's a slam dunk. And then with the inclusion of the Elawa Triangle, I think it made it even better, which I sent, told Bob in, in an email. And you know, it, it just seems to align the core competencies of both organizations, and it just, it's, it's a home run, John. It's a home run. Congratulations and congratulations to you, Bob.
We're all excited.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alderman?
Mercenary Mike here. How much cash to boot are you guys giving us?
First round draft choice.
Well, well, Mike, that depends on what the final budget comes in from the Army Corps of Engineers. At minimal, it would be $600,000, but it could be as much as eight, at $800,000 to $900,000 depending on things such as in-water habitat structures and, and armoring the ravine and that sort of thing. And we also are going to be setting up an endowment which will be available for additional staff and ongoing restoration over the years.
You know I say that tongue-in-cheek. Take my wife, please.
Any other comments or questions for John? If not, I'll ask for comments from the public. Anyone? If not, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding relating to an exchange of properties involving the McCormick Nature Preserve, Open Lands Park and a portion of property at Elawa Farm, and direct the city manager and the city attorney to proceed with the preparation of the legal documents to effectuate the exchange. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Hamlin?
Aye.
Alderman Reisenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Hamlin?
Aye.
Alderman Moreno?
Aye.
78, 00:00, motion carries.
Great, and I will add my thanks to Bob and to John. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Additional items for council discussion? Anything else? Alderman?
I, excuse me, I do have a comment. I would like to share with everyone as the liaison from city council to Croya, first of all, that it's been an honor to do that, that the, the staff and the leadership of Croya have been phenomenal, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to, to formally state that I believe Croya to be a very key component in our community. It provides a, our young people with a safe environment, not only to, to have fun, but to learn and grow together. And their leadership, Croya and the board, directed by youth with oversight by the parents and by the adult board, I think is, is the right recipe for, for Croya. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to reiterate that. I think we all are well aware of it, but I wanted to share that with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Alderman. Anything else?
Yes, as long as we're talking about organizations that we, that we love. I, I'm not sure, Bob, have we mentioned about Patty Jenkins and Dickinson Hall? We have new leadership at Dickinson Hall. I, I serve as a liaison there. And also take Spanish. Don't ask me to say anything, but my ear's getting a little better.
We be anxious.
It's a terrific organization, so I'm, I'm there weekly. There's always something exciting. Actually, I went to a senior resources meeting recently, and people take it very seriously, good discussion. There was a mahjong class in the room next door with the sliding partition that I think was having more fun than we were, and that's always hard, you know, when the people next to you are laughing harder. But we had a, we had a terrific meeting, and somebody at the meeting made a suggestion about something, and Patty said, I think that's a really good idea. Which of you would, would spearhead that? And people were kind of like, well, she goes, I'm going to hear a lot of good ideas, I'm not going to be able to do them all, but if you help me, I will. And I thought, okay, she's going to be fantastic. So really good leadership there, and I think you're going to hear a lot of exciting things coming out of, coming out of Dickinson Hall.
Great. Terrific. Anything else? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, we are adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Wow.